All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, September 10, 2019 Board of Selectmen's meeting. We're going to be leaving, going into executive session, to discuss strategy with respect to the collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body in that chair so declares with the police union. We'll review and approve executive session minutes from 6:25, 7:23, and 8:06, 2019. Then we'll come back and reconvene in open session at 7 o'clock, and I'll read the agenda then. See you soon. Vote, all in favor? Oh, you can make the vote.
Make a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
For our purposes of collective bargaining.
Second.
All those in favor? Roll call vote.
Ed O'Leary.
David, yes.
Mark, yes.
Leah, yes.
Okay. All righty, welcome back. Thank you for allowing us to go a little bit later in the executive session. So, our agenda for today, citizens input at 7 o'clock, 7:05 Eagle Scout proclamation, 7:20 Foxborough Country Club doing business as the Foxborough Country Club, 7:35 the police union contract, 7:50 close the special town meeting warrant, 8 o'clock selectmen's update, 8:05 town manager's update, although we're going to switch those. Town manager's going to go first, 8:10 assistant town manager, and then we'll have a few action items. So, Mike, you want to lead us in the pledge?
Certainly. Hi. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, for citizens input?
Well.
Oh, God.
Why not?
Keeping us on our toes if you're here or not.
It's September.
Pat Stevens, 63 Mechanic Street. I just wanted to thank Chris or whoever put up that crossing sign on Mechanic as you're getting up to Pleasant. That's all.
Okay.
I was so pleased.
Awesome.
Such little things, but big.
And Chris can take credit for that.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you.
All righty, anybody else here for citizens input? Feedback.
It sounds like it's coming from the ceiling.
Someone go back here. Someone go back here. Turn it down inside in.
Test. How are we doing?
No, I don't hear it.
Oh, that's better. So maybe that was Amanda. All right, well, no more feedback. So we're going to have a Eagle Scout presentation. Come on up. I'm going to come up, too.
Oh, that's okay.
Can I have a seat right here? All right, we have an official citation from the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen, on the occasion of this Eagle Court of Honor, commands Joseph Spagnardi—did I do it right?
Yes.
Thank you. I've been practicing. Troop 32 Boy Scouts of America in achieving the highest rank of Eagle Scout. Recognition is given to Joseph Spagnardi for your Eagle Scout project to design and build a Gaga ball pit at the Borough Elementary School. Joseph wanted his project to be one which brings kids together and encourages an environment of inclusivity, no matter the age. From his initial brainstorm through to design and construction, Joseph remained focused and organized. He cultivated his resources and enlisted the guidance and help of former elementary school principal, building grounds crew, and several local contractors and landscapers. Joseph coordinated this team of professionals and set off on a path of success. Congratulations on your achievement to the rank of Eagle Scout. May this recognition express your, our appreciation for the time spent envisioning and planning the construction of the Gaga ball pit at the Borough Elementary School. The Board of Selectmen is very proud and grateful for your successful efforts and would like to join your fellow scouts, family, and friends in paying honor and tribute to you for this splendid achievement in earning the rank of Eagle Scout in the Boy Scouts of America. This citation is given under the seal of the Town of Foxborough on the 10th day of September, 2019, signed by the Board of Selectmen, Mark Elfman, Leah Gibson, Ed O'Leary, David Feldman, and Christopher Mitchell. Good job.
Thank you.
All right, so we need one more signature. I'm going to give this to you now, anyway. And if you wouldn't mind, maybe some of us old timers, what is the Gaga ball pit? So you can explain to maybe some other people.
Yeah, once he's done.
So the pit is based around a game that you play, and so it's an octagonal sand pit. And there's like a dodgeball rolling around, and the kids will hit it with their hands, and they'll try to hit it at other kids' legs, and then if you get hit in the legs, you're out of the game, and then it keeps going.
Yeah, awesome. Yeah, very interesting.
Yeah, congratulations.
I've got a picture.
Yeah?
Thank you. I appreciate this.
I'll use your phone if you want.
Oh, I don't need to be.
Sure you can. That's all about the deal.
They didn't tell you that.
Okay, I just lost your camera. There you go.
We won't wait for Bill.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right, it's all right.
All right, I'm sorry.
All I got to do is double tap.
Oh, okay, there we go. It's one of these new fangled phones. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three. Excellent. Great, thank you. There you go. You're welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I turn 18 to you first.
It's not just a little picture.
Just the necktie, right?
It's crazy that it's a—
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
So we'll hold on to that just so we can rest in some sleep, too. Is that all right?
And we'll get it right out to you, okay?
Okay. Good, congratulations. We'll get you to sign it on Thursday.
Yes.
All right, Foxborough Country Club, application for change of manager to Christopher Loper. Christopher Loper, how are you doing?
Yes, well, thanks. How are you?
Good, thanks. Welcome to the board.
Thank you.
Tell us a little bit about the change of manager and yourself, even though we have it in our packet.
Sure, so I started Foxborough Country Club about three months ago as the club business manager. Started in the business back in 1995 at the country club in Brookline, and progressed into a number of different roles throughout the last almost 30 years, so.
And now going to be running Foxborough?
Yes, yes.
You'll be signing off the alcohol?
I do all the purchasing of all the alcohol, signing off on all the billing and everything, so.
Any questions from the board? No, all set?
Nope, all set.
No? I'm all set, too.
Paperwork's all.
Yeah, paperwork was good. All right, I'll accept a motion.
Make a motion to, for a change of manager for the Foxborough Country Club to Mr. Christopher Loper.
Second.
All righty, any further discussion? All those in favor? Pose none? Good. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All your decisions were this easy.
So far, so good. Thank you very much.
All righty, 7:35 we'll do the police contract. Moving right along.
I'm going to have to turn over to Mike.
So the police contract, we have come to a settlement that has come before the board this evening, and this is a two-year contract, which is one year retro and then one year for the year that we're in. It includes a 2% COLA for each year and a number of small stipend increases that are in line with other contracts and with surrounding communities. It also involves a small increase in the night differential, 1% increase in education pay for bachelor's degree and master's degree. It involves a change that the board had requested and has been negotiated for the, that the Board of Selectmen may delegate the town manager to hear grievances on behalf of the town. Detail pay for private details, which would be effective 30 days after ratification by the board, are increasing to $52. And those are the main points on this, on this contract. Do you have any questions from the board?
No, well, not from, any questions from the board? We went over it pretty extensively in executive session. Comfortable. All right, I'll accept the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the police union contract.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Pose none? Good. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All your decisions were this easy.
So far, so good. Thank you very much.
All righty, 7:35 we'll do the police contract. Moving right along.
I'm going to have to turn over to Mike.
So the police contract, we have come to a settlement that has come before the board this evening, and this is a two-year contract, which is one year retro and then one year for the year that we're in. It includes a 2% COLA for each year and a number of small stipend increases that are in line with other contracts and with surrounding communities. It also involves a small increase in the night differential, 1% increase in education pay for bachelor's degree and master's degree. It involves a change that the board had requested and has been negotiated for the, that the Board of Selectmen may delegate the town manager to hear grievances on behalf of the town. Detail pay for private details, which would be effective 30 days after ratification by the board, are increasing to $52. And those are the main points on this, on this contract. Do you have any questions from the board?
No, well, not from, any questions from the board? We went over it pretty extensively in executive session. Comfortable. All right, I'll accept the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the police union contract.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Great. Thank you for all your hard work, and, Mike, I'm sure you all work, too. Mike and Mike.
I'm still working here.
Moving right along, close the special town meeting warrant. We'll bring that up.
Sure, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we have before you tonight a proposal for 12 articles. We originally started off around 15. We were able to knock a few of them off because we didn't need them at this time, so there are 12 articles for consideration. I'll go through them one by one for you. First is dealing with a contribution to capital stabilization. We had, there'd been quite a bit of discussion during the last annual town meeting that we weren't putting enough money aside into stabilization. It turns out through the analysis that the new finance director had done just recently that we're actually $200,000 to the good in terms of where we our stabilization amount should be, general stabilization amount should be. So that's good news, that we don't need to necessarily add additional money at this time. However, capital could use some more money, and it's, we're not in any, we're not in any violation of anything, but we think it's a good idea to put some more money into it. We have not determined what that number is at this time, but we're going to look at that to see how much money we have available to put into that, that we can feel comfortable with and not, and not hurt our free cash position going into next fiscal year, et cetera. So we think this is a prudent thing to do in light of the fact that there's always big capital projects to do, and as we know, this became, came in pretty handy while trying to do the Borough School project. That was a really good strategic move to make on our part to do that. So we were able to get that done recently, but now that we've drained that, that fund down to the point where we've got some other projects on the horizon that we can talk about, and then we'll probably talk about at the, at the financial summit, things that we should probably be looking at. And that, that was a good time for us to start putting some money away. So that's going to be a recommendation that we'll have at that time. And we'll get back to what the number is. We're still working on what that number should be. The second thing is to address two budget amendments. One was, these are, these are two actions that were taken at town meeting, which we'd like the town meeting to reconsider and look at again. And that is to see if the town will put back $26,500 in administration salaries. There's quite a bit of discussion that went around that, and turned out that it was the actions that were taken really were, actually resulted in some, some challenges, legal challenges that could have occurred as a result of that. So I won't, I'll spare everybody the details of that, but certainly it's something that we want to try and address properly at this time. The second thing is that there was, there was a cruiser that was eliminated from consideration for $56,720. That is an additional cruiser above and beyond the three that we've already funded. The need has actually gone up to four instead of three. Lieutenant Grace is here, sort of chief in waiting, Grace is here, so we want to just, maybe you can speak to that a little bit, Lieutenant, and speak to the issue of why we need that extra vehicle.
Leave me, everybody. So on this particular vehicle, it was when we did the evaluation of the fleet and went through the mileage and how many cruisers we have, these are frontline vehicles. We had selected four vehicles due to be turned over. All of the vehicles were high-mileage vehicles, and we have replaced three of them so far. And this would be the last vehicle of those four to be replaced. That vehicle today is sitting with 92,000 miles on it, and if it's going to be replaced, I'm very comfortable saying that it's going to take me eight months to, one, get the funding, two, purchase it from Ford, and three, get it in line at MHQ and outfitted, just because they're the largest distributor and they do all of the police agencies from New Hampshire to Rhode Island, and you've got to get in line. So based on the, what this particular cruiser is averaging, it's, this one's averaging 24,000 miles a year. We have a lot of young officers who drive a lot of miles. So the cost analysis of taking a car with 120,000 miles and using it as a frontline vehicle, three shifts in a row, is, the wear and tear on that car is astronomical, and the replacement is, just starts to fall apart. So that's why this vehicle is, we're looking to replace it.
So nothing's changed? It's the same one that we asked for at town meeting?
It is, yeah. It's just, you know, I think it's, I think it's put on 7,000 miles since we started, and that's all. Nothing, nothing has changed?
I think, I think it was unfortunate that it was presented in an unfortunate way because it was, there was, there was no real, I think the presentation was that there was no real genuine need for it. The need is very clear about this. This is, this is a safety issue. We should definitely have, we should rotate them out, four, four, four vehicles now, because what's happened is that there's a lot of changeover in the department, and the, and the requirements of the department have increased to the point where we now have more people on the road doing things, and it's actually putting more mileage on the vehicles. So I think if you, maybe you could speak to that a little bit, Lieutenant.
Absolutely, and the, and we get into a very gray area when we talk about police cruisers with that many miles and liability to the, to the town. Ford has an extensive repair package that you replace the vehicles out over a certain time. Your warranties are all, you're all gone, your drivetrain warranties are all exceeded anything, and essentially our town mechanics, which are fantastic, they're spending an awful lot of time changing out major parts. If we can avoid those major parts failing, we recycle that car for another three or four years at a different capacity. So if we let it go too long, it's gone. It's just, we can't do much with it. And as Mr. Keegan said, we do have a large influx of new police officers. Patrol operation is extensive. They're, they're doing a nice job hitting, using all their undirected patrol time, and they are increasing the miles on the cars. We promote that as supervisors, for the officers to be out there and be active, and unfortunately, there's a cost to being productive. And we just want to make sure we're providing a safe vehicle for the officers, because it gets to a certain point where they do start to ask, like, really, like, I'm due for a car here. It becomes a little unsafe. And they, and they start to feel it. They feel like they deserve a car that is tight and feels like it can handle a variety of different calls, and they, they have to respond, and they want that car to be safe. So we want to make sure we provide a safe vehicle.
What happens when, when you're down a vehicle in the department for a week, say?
Well, we just, all the other vehicles take on the burden. So the car that maybe may only has two offices in it, now it runs three shifts every single time. So there's no spare car at a patrol level that we can put someone in, we just don't have that luxury. The cars are all designed with their computers and their AEDs and stop sticks and patrol rifles, that I just don't have the capacity to have a spare car. If it's a spare car and it's in good condition, I'm keeping it. I'm using it daily. I only replace them when they get to the point of it's, you're throwing money away potentially.
So it puts a burden on the, on the department when—
It does.
—we have one of your frontline vehicles in the shop either on a fairly regular basis or for an extended period of time.
And if we can keep these miles of these frontline cars below 100,000 miles, our success rate is unbelievable. Between the highway department, we don't, we haven't, with these new Ford Explorers, we haven't had a major crisis with one of the cars. We had a couple factory recalls that we went through, but I've seen the other departments that rack up miles on these cars, and then they start to have some mechanical failures that take time, that we've got to outsource to dealers, and then they're gone for two, three weeks. And then those miles go somewhere. So they kind of start affecting everything else.
Okay. Thank you.
All right? Thank you. Thank you, Mike. So the next one is Article 3, which I think the board is fully aware of. That was the request for the feasibility study for the human services facility. And that request is, was made in detail at the last, I think at your last meeting, so you're familiar with that one. Article 4 is the, is an acceptance of Montgomery Way as a public way. These are all, the next, the next two are acceptance of ways that have been, have met the requirements of the planning board and the public works department that are accepted, ready to be accepted as public ways. So that's Articles 4 and 5. Article 6 is the, Article, is the Affordable Housing Trust, to see if the town will vote to extend the Affordable Housing Trust established by the May 13, 2013, in a town meeting to July 1, 2025. There was, there was a sunset provision in that, in that request originally, so this was, this effectively extends it beyond that for the next, the next five to six years. Article 7 is to remove the deputy chief position from civil service. This is the deputy police chief position from civil service. Currently, there is, we've not had a position, a person sitting in the deputy chief position for how many years now, Ed?
2013, when Deputy Chief John Chandler retired.
Okay. So we have a situation now where if, in fact, we leave it in civil service, then we're limited in terms of how the process will be. We'll have to go through civil service procedures, et cetera, to, to fill the position. It's, we think we have a good internal candidate to help fill that position, so I think we're at a position, in time now, we think we'd like to get that removed from civil service and allow us the flexibility to make the appointment here locally. So that's, that's Article, Article 8. Article 9 is the police contract that we just talked about.
Did you skip 8?
Yes, that was 7.
I'm sorry, Article 8, I apologize. So one of the things that we have noticed in reviewing the charter and, and the bylaws is that there is no mention of authorizing or including the strong chief provision in the, in the town's charter and bylaws. Chapter 41, Section 97A. And so it was, I think it was the 97 chief, if I'm not mistaken. Is that right, Ed?
Correct.
So this would be not making it a strong chief, which would allow the, and provided it's consistent with the charter as well. So effectively, what this does is allow the chief to make appointments, but has to still get approved by the town manager in terms of final, final authority. So this is, this actually cleans up that language by allowing that to happen. So it's never been accepted until, up until now, so this cleans up that language by, by addressing that. Article 9 is the contract we just talked about. Article 10 is the amendments to kennel definitions. I have to admit to you, I'm not fully up to speed on what these are, but clearly, this is a case where the, we have not visited our kennel provisions here in town for many, many years. So this is an update, this is a request that was made by both the town clerk as well as the animal control officer, the new animal control officer, and so we're actually trying to include that. This goes for both Article 10 and Article 11. And Article, Article 12 is, deals with, deals with the issue of public nuisance and animals and violations and penalties, et cetera. So this is interesting to me, because I actually didn't think about this until you guys talked about this earlier. This might be an opportunity to take this, actually to put that language in, to say that the hearings shall be conducted—
I agree.
—by the town manager.
Yeah.
I agree.
This is the perfect spot.
Perfect spot to do it, yeah. So we didn't think about that early, but I actually, we can do that. We might be able to amend that, because it's your warrant, so you can, you can actually amend it. So I'll take—
Be under Article 12, or would you make an article?
I think it's, it would be under Article 12, but I will, I will review that with town council tomorrow and check with them on that.
Okay.
And I'll address that issue. Okay. And that essentially is it.
All right, any questions from the board? All right, Ed, I'll—
So we can't, we can't close it if you're going to amend it?
You can, you can close it, but you can always amend it. You can always amend it.
Okay.
Okay? That means if you close it, nothing new can come in.
Okay.
All right.
Second.
All right. So I need a motion from you, Ed, on that.
Make a motion to close the special town meeting warrant.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
All right, thank you.
All right, so we're going to go out of order a little bit. I'm going to do town manager's update next.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to, to talk about something which has been talked about in town for quite some time, for the past couple months. I have been, I was involved in a, in a consideration for a new position outside the town of Foxborough as a, as town manager of Dedham, Massachusetts. I've gone through that process. I have considered it carefully, I've talked it over with my family, and I've decided I'm going to remain here in Foxborough. I've declared, I've, I've removed myself from consideration. The decision's going to be made tomorrow night, from what I understand. I've contacted the recruiter and the town and advised them that I've decided that it would be my best interest to stay here. It was something I thought about, but certainly, I think, I've enjoyed my work here, I've enjoyed working with this board, I've enjoyed working with the, with the, with the department heads. I have a great staff that I'm very, very proud of, so I, I think it behooves me to try and finish my career here if I can, and hopefully I'll be able to work that out with the board to try and do that. But my goal would be to stay here until December of 2023. That's my goal.
Personally, I think it's a great decision.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
See, I knew you were smart.
Took me a little while to get there, but I was like this. But thank you. Appreciate that.
Anything else?
Yeah, so a couple other things, a couple of things. I wanted to just say that there is a, there were two things I wanted to mention, of course. There we go. Yes, the financial summit is going to be October 17. Right now, it looks like it's going to be at the Ahern Middle School. This meeting room was actually being used that night, so we will actually plan to have it at the Ahern Middle School. We're not sure if it's going to be in the cafeteria or in the, in the auditorium at this point. That's, that's to be determined, but right now, it seems certain that we're going to have it at the school itself. Second thing is that there has been quite a bit of discussion about Triple E recently, and the state has been doing some spraying, and they're going to be starting to do aerial spraying as of tonight, actually. And there is a portion of Foxborough that's going to be sprayed, not the whole town, because it's been determined that certain sections are not, are not in any kind of danger for Triple E, but certain parts are. I suspect they're probably around the waterways, those types of areas that they'll, they'll try and address. But if anybody has an interest and concern about that, you can go to the, to the state, the town's website. Actually, we can, you can, you can connect with on that, correct, Amanda?
Yes.
All right, so it's, it's www.foxboroughma.gov under the Health Department website, and you'll see information about the Triple E spraying that the state's going to be taking, taking on, starting for the next seven days. And it'll be for, there are fifty-seven communities that are involved in that spraying operation. And obviously, for, we're, we're trying to mitigate the, the Triple E threat that's been going on. So that's, that's going on as well. So if people wanna actually look at their own street, you can go on that site and then you can click on it and it'll actually tell you whether that area's gonna be sprayed or not, or if there's a need to be sprayed.
Two people actually reached out to me this week, maybe because like kids, sports stuff, but particular areas like the Ahern Field, the high school, you know, Payson. I don't know if there's any plans there. I haven't checked those individual streets. But do we have any kind of input into that with those areas of large people gathered at night?
Yeah, typically what, what happens is that, and I know that they recently sprayed around the stadium recently, this past week, because they knew a lot of people are gonna be at that location, so they, they sprayed that area. So I suspect that they'll be trying to, to focus on those areas that with large gatherings will typically occur. So like stadiums and stuff like that in the city, in, in-
But they don't know where our kids are at night, at dusk, you know, when there's kids all practicing, like night sports, for example.
Yeah, so, so they, they are aware of where the schools are located. That's, that's the public, the public health departments know that. The question is whether or not there's any kind of a threat at those particular areas at this point. So that's what, the state's made that determination through various testing that they've been doing and-
Did you not concern them spraying while kids were outside?
No, no, just them getting sprayed like Payson, for example, fall practice.
Yeah.
There's no one, that's not a school. You know, the state probably wouldn't know that that's an area. I, you know, I just didn't know if we had any kind of input into-
So board health, the, the board health has been working with them directly on this. In fact, they did a, a long conference call about this today.
And that's where I directed them, was to the board health.
That's, so if there are questions about it, certainly.
Okay.
Your, your direction was correct.
And there is, on the board health website, Amanda just pointed out that there are recommended cancellation times and dates on the, on the board health website as far as when they're, when they're spraying.
Oh, wow. I wonder if that got communicated to the different sports programs.
From what I could tell, for a lot of communication on social media, a lot of sports teams were adjusted, whether they were doing indoor practice or they were canceling it altogether or moving it around. So I think they all get notified as part of the state communications. And then the health director was also pushing out a lot of messaging as well to schools and different departments we were.
This is part of a statewide phone conference that our health director was involved in today. So this, you know, this information's been pushed out as soon as she collected it after a ninety-minute phone conference.
That's all I have.
All right, great. Selectmen's update? Anybody on the board? Okay. I've got a few things. One, now hearing that Mr. Keegan's coming back, we have to discuss contract coming up. His contract's gonna be ending soon, so I'll meet with Bill next week and then I'll bring back to the board on the seventeenth what he'd like to see in, or with Mike, too, in a new contract. Bill already talked about the summit, the town financial summit. Also, we were gonna have on the seventeenth a discussion from, someone from Mansfield on plastic bags. He was gonna make a presentation to the board. He can't make it in the September seventeenth meeting. He's going to be coming to our October-
We think.
We think.
He's gonna let me know with the dates. I've given him, I've indicated that we were, we're available, what our schedule is in October, so, so he's aware of that. So he'll get back to us, let us know.
Okay. There will be a selectmen's meeting on Thursday, continuation of the public hearing for the municipal conversion permit. That'll be chaired by Ed O'Larry. Chris will be back and Dave, Leah and myself have to recuse ourselves and we, we won't be attending that meeting. And lastly, he probably thought he got out of it, but today is Dave's birthday. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Dave.
Happy birthday, Dave.
You sure you're happy about that?
And where I haven't been part of a town manager contract, is that typical before? That just the chair would meet with Bill and then bring it to everyone and not, okay?
So you would discuss it and then meet an executive session with, with all the members, all the members? Without me being there? I wouldn't be-
So these two meet and then we meet?
These two meet and then we meet an executive session.
Gotcha, okay, okay.
And we go through the-
With, with Mike.
Okay.
And we'll go through it.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so you all here at a time.
Won't be that complicated, I can trust you.
Yeah. Mike, Assistant Town Manager reply?
Sure, a couple of things. Scheduled things coming up. McGinty Family Fun Day on Saturday, September fourteenth, from eleven-thirty to three-thirty. That's this Saturday. And then Foxborough Music Association Bottling Can Drive at Town Hall Parking Lot, also this Saturday from nine to two. Sometimes it's nice when you got a couple of good events running at the center of town because they, they tend to draw people and they complement each other. On that vein, on Saturday, September twenty-first, we have two events going on on the Common. And, and we had this a couple of years ago and these two events did complement each other. So the first one is Foxborough Lions Fall Festival, which is Saturday, the twenty-first, from ten to two. And POW MIA Vigil is, is on that same, same day. So the ceremony is from four to five o'clock on that Saturday. Prior to that, there's a twenty-four hour vigil that, that takes place on the Common. I have a couple of just general things that, that we've been looking at and discussing at length, you know, in administration and human resources to, to continue to be, try to be the most effective and efficient organization and, and address the needs of the public. One is evaluations. So with the contract, the police contract that, that we just discussed earlier this evening, we've just ratified the evaluation process that the, that the police department has been involved in, but now it's, it's, you know, become official. And with that, we're looking to, to further develop our employees to best serve the community and work, you know, as best we can to, to have the, the best, most developed employees, workforce that we can. We're working for succession in, in every department, in every role. And towards that end, we are always looking for, do we have in our system, from a systems perspective, any single points of failure? And we've identified a couple and we're looking to, to rectify those situations, either through cross-training, cross-functional operations, or by making sure that we hire people so that we've got a backup. So those are things that we're looking at as a backdrop to, to make ourselves the, the most effective and efficient we can. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right, Ted, some action items.
Could I just say one, a couple, a couple of quick things? The other, the other thing that Mike was able to do today was to take the new Director of Finance and the new Director of Accounting around to the various external operations. We're gonna do an internal meeting as well with all the various department, department heads, so that they can get to know them one-on-one and start identifying some of the, the operational needs that they have in terms of finance and how we can actually try and do things a little bit better and, and develop that line of communication, which I think is really important. And I think it was a very helpful meeting for them, so them, they can know where everything is. And number two is to understand, is to get to know people on a, on a one-to-one basis. George has been more intricately involved in, in the operations side. Marie has been less involved in, because she's more in the transactional side of things. So she's, but it was good for her to kinda meet everyone and kinda get to know everybody. It's, it's gonna be, I think, really a, a good step forward for that. And there was one other thing I wanted to mention, too. Come to me. I'm sorry, bud.
While you're thinking of it, I'll expound on what you just mentioned. It was a great tour around Foxborough for, for George, Marie, myself and the departments involved. So next week, over the, over next weekend, the following week, we'll be meeting with Library, Recreation and Fire. Otherwise, we did meet with all the departments that are outside of Town Hall. Once we get to those three other departments, then we'll be meeting with the departments inside of Town Hall. And what, what people felt and heard was an open line of communication. George, our new finance director, said, "My door is open, pick up the phone." You know, email's fine for, for little things, but he wants to hear and connect for people. He's a problem solver. In addition to being an accountant, a, a finance director, he's also been a town administrator. So he knows how to strategically solve problems from, from the high level. I think we're really gonna benefit from that sort of perspective. But folks really, really, I think, appreciated meeting these two folks and knowing that they're complementing the, the awesome team that we already have in, in the finance department. So I look forward to bringing them around and meeting with all the rest of the departments. And in that, we're getting great ideas that have come from thirty years of experience from East Bridgewater with George, eight years of experience with Marie on both the treasurer side as well as the accounting side, and then all of the creative, innovative ideas that are coming from the departments. And that's something that I think is really gonna benefit them and all of us, seeing those things come out, things that maybe they haven't had a chance to, to bring forward or just, you know, you know, getting around the table and seeing face to face is, is a great way to open dialogue.
I thought what it was, I wanted to say congratulations to the craft organization for their, their sixth banner that was revealed the other night and the fact that they invited us to participate in that ceremony this year, which was, was actually very nice. It was a nice gesture on their part and it was, and it's great to be part of it as, as a town of Foxborough. And, and I, and I think, and they truly appreciate the fact that we were part of it as well, to be part of that, that, that ceremony. So I thought that was great. And congratulations on a nice win the other night, too, as well. And off to a great, great start.
Thank you. On to Miami.
On to Miami.
Miami.
That's right.
All right, Ed. Make a motion to approve- You're with me, people, it's-
Just lose it?
Yeah. Make a motion to approve the Rodman Ride for Kids application for two, one-day wine and malt licenses for Rodman Ride for Kids for Friday, September twentieth, two thousand nineteen, and Saturday, September twenty-first, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right. Just, just a note that the passing of Don Rodman this past week. Don is, is really a, been a giant in this community in so many different ways. Sorry to see him go, but our condolences to the Rodman family.
Certainly a loss for the community of Foxborough, even though he wasn't a resident.
That's right.
Did so much work-
Did so much for this, literally donated millions and millions of dollars to, to charities and, and various groups throughout the community.
Motion to approve public event application for the Knights of Columbus, Foxborough Council six oh three, to collect donations at road entrances for the Common on Saturday, October twelfth, two thousand nineteen, eight AM to one PM.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve block party application on Chadwick Road between Carroll Drive and Villa Drive on Saturday, September twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, from five to ten.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion to approve Splitsville early liquor license extension request of eleven AM for New England Patriots Sunday home games on nine twenty-two nineteen, twelve twenty-two nineteen, and twelve twenty-nine nineteen.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion to approve Jake and Joe's early liquor license extension request of eleven AM for New England Patriots Sunday home games on nine twenty-two nineteen, twelve twenty-one nineteen, and twelve twenty-two nineteen, and twelve twenty-nine nineteen.
Second.
And just as a clarification, I guess, they, it's not, not sure which day the Patriots will be playing, on the twenty-first or the twenty-second? Is that?
Yeah, so it's or, not both.
Is that late, that's a late season, the tuber you turn by the NFL?
Sometimes it could be on a Saturday morning, sometimes Sunday morning.
That's correct, yeah.
So do, do they have the ability to open up early for liquor sales on a Saturday? I thought Sunday was the only day they could do it. Wasn't that the brunch law?
That's correct.
Or limit something. Yeah. So we could only approve it for the twenty-second. If it's the twenty-first, they can't, unless we wanna put it on hold and double check it.
We should, I would approve the twenty-second because we know we can do that. The twenty-first, we should go back and check.
Do you want me to redo the motion? Yeah, and leave out the twenty-second for now, twenty-first for now.
Twenty-first.
Motion to approve Jake and Joe's early liquor license extension request of eleven AM for New England Patriots Sunday home games on nine twenty-two nineteen, twelve twenty-two nineteen, and twelve twenty-nine nineteen.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion to accept gift donation of two hundred and seventy dollars from the Friends of Foxborough Seniors to the Council on Aging Human Services to pay for one-half of June and July Tai Chi classes at the Senior Center.
Second. I think that's seventy, not two.
He skipped one.
Skip one.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, so motion was made, it was seconded.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right. And then go back up one. Acceptance of a gift donation of two hundred and seventy dollars from the Friends. There's one there. Or the one below it.
Ten seconds.
Okay.
Ten seconds.
Motion to accept a gift donation of seventy dollars from the students of Gail Larkin to the Council on Aging Human Services to support programs at the Senior Center in appreciation of Gail Larkin for teaching a beginner art class over the summer.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just under discussion, I asked Bill, like anything under, let's say, I'm just saying, a hundred dollars or less, where we've been talking about deferring, like, can we defer it to the Council on Aging or REC or Veteran Services or Town Manager? Just since sometimes we have a lot of these small ones. I mean, I don't know how the board feels about it, but, or if it's even possible.
It's a matter of board policy to do that.
So maybe it's for discussion another time on the agenda, but-
I mean, it's, it's within your jurisdiction to do it.
Yeah, I mean-
To be able to defer to-
You, you could set a limit as to how much it has to go before the board.
Okay, yeah, that's something we can sort of discuss.
Yeah, like maybe it's a hundred dollars or under, it doesn't have to come before us or, you know, something just for discussion, since there's, the last couple of weeks, there's been some long lists, so.
Yeah, and short money.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, but these are good fillers when we're ahead of schedule.
Hopefully, we can-
I think it just shows also, I, I know they're small amounts, but we're taking seriously enough, especially from an ethical perspective. Because I, I don't believe we want money just going to agencies without town knowing about it, as random as that might sound.
Well, it has to do with his finance, yeah.
You'd still have the application process, it could probably just be approved.
It could be part, it could be part of the, the town manager's report.
Yeah, I just, I'm just saying, so it would still happen.
I've approved this one, this one, this one.
Yeah, these are, these are ones that I've approved.
We'll discuss it. All right, all those in favor? Next is the motion to accept a gift donation of twenty-five dollars to the Veteran Services Department from David W. and Janice C. McCabe in memory of Philip T. Clark.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Veteran Services, a motion to accept a gift donation of twenty-five dollars to the Veteran Services Department from Barry and Carol Edwood in memory of Ted Ellis.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion to accept gift donation of twenty-five dollars to the Veteran Services Department from Constance M. Garrity and Thomas J. Garrity in memory of Philip T. Clark.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion to accept gift donation of a hundred dollars to the Veteran Services Department from the Independent Sportsman's Club, Inc., in memory of Philip T. Clark.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion to accept gift donation of twenty-five dollars to the Veteran Services Department from John and Judith Mills in memory of Philip T. Clark.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Ed, do those individually, each minute one? I'm sorry. So when you get to the minutes? Yes. Do them individually. Okay. I think I have one here. Motion to accept gift donation- Motion to accept gift donation, okay, give that one.
It would be 13 or 14.
13 and 14.
Okay, did I complete 13?
You did 12.
Okay, so. Motion to accept gift donation of $25 to the Veteran Services Department from John and Judith Mill in memory of Philip Clark.
You already did that one.
Okay.
So the next one, 13.
Motion to accept a gift donation.
So 2012 and 2014 were the same.
Yeah, they do.
I'll do 10-14. Uh, no, we did that, so do 10-13.
So 10-13, 10-13 is okay. You need, you can go ahead and read 10-13, right?
You can leave it now.
That's not been, that's not been approved.
It's just that the-
But it's not on the-
The recommended action.
Do you want me to, do this one?
Yes, if-
Okay. All right, move to accept a gift donation of $100 to the Veteran Services Department from Thomas G. M. Petro and Elizabeth G. M. Petro in memory of Philip Clark.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Mr. Chairman, could I point out who Philip Clark is?
Please, because he was like six in a row.
You see him, his name a lot there, and this is a gentleman who lives his entire life in Foxborough, other than the time that he was deployed away during World War II. He was a recipient of the Distinguished Flying Cross, a Staff Sergeant in the Army Air Corps, you know, and, and, you know, the only other time he lived out of Foxborough was, and it didn't, you know, early in his career, he was with the Foxborough Company, and the only other time he lived out of Foxborough was, you know, these recent years as his health failed. He was an important member of this community, and that's why so many people have remembered him.
Thank you. Thank you.
You can skip that last one because it's a duplicate and I'll direct it.
10-14 is a duplicate, Ed, you don't have to read that one. 10-15.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to approve August 6th, 19 meeting minutes.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Motion to ensure.
Second. All those in favor?
Good thing I don't have a script for that one.
Good night, everybody.
All right.